We welcome everyone to our first meeting of the year, our council meeting, Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. We welcome all who are here and are happy that you're here, and welcome to those who will be viewing the meeting on the YouTube channel. We will have an opening by Councilmember Carl Ward today.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I thought I'd start with, I don't know if any of you are familiar with this. This is a movie that my wife and I first saw on our honeymoon. So that was a long time ago.
Had quite the impact, didn't it?
It was in color, too.
Whoa, whoa.
But it's a musical version of Charles Dickens' The Christmas Carol. It's called Scrooge. And after, after Scrooge has gone through all of his machinations with, with the ghosts and he changes his ways, he sings a little song. And I'd just like to paraphrase what he says here because I think it adds to what we're trying to accomplish this new year. He says, "I'll begin again, throw away the past, and the future that I will build will be something that will last. I will start anew, I will make amends, and I'll make quite certain that the story ends on a note of hope, on a strong amen, when I was able to begin again." So I hope that's what we can accomplish as we start this new year. I'd also like to offer a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, as we meet this evening in, we seek to have Thy Spirit to guide and direct us, and we give Thee thanks for the opportunities to serve our community, to be able to be servants of Thee, and to help our communities and our county develop and grow in the right ways. And we ask You to guide us and direct us in the things that we do tonight that will be inspired. We pray for any who are having special challenges or are issues at this time, that they will be blessed. And ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carl. At this time, I want to take a little minute and really welcome our new council members. We're glad you're here. Thank you for serving and thank you for being here. And I hope that if you have any questions at all, please do not be afraid. Say, "I have a question," because when I first came on a number of years ago, it was like, I don't know if I should ask this or not. But please do, please don't be afraid. No questions are dumb, okay? And we invite all so that you can know exactly what's going on. So welcome. We are glad you're here. Thank you for serving in the county. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved that we approve the agenda for Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, and January third, two thousand twenty-three?
I, I had an opportunity to read through those. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as needing correction, so I would move to approve the minutes of those three meetings, the thirteenth, the twenty-second, and January third.
I'll second.
Okay, before we go on, I did have a question. Were some of the council members weren't here for the meeting in December, do they go ahead and approve, or what's the proper protocol on that?
You're gonna abstain if they aren't working.
I would abstain, and then we still probably have the four.
Okay, awesome.
Unless, you know, unless, you know, no one kind of gets a burr under his belt.
I've got one, but I won't say it now, so.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded that those who are wanting to approve the minutes from those three dates, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, three abstentions on that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, we will now have a report from our county executive, Mr. Zook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I have an appointment to present to the council. It's actually two appointments for the same board, and that's the Logan Cash Airport Authority Board. We have one member, Councilmember Carl Ward, who represents us on that board, whose term has expired, and I would like to present him to you for reappointment. And then we have another position on that board where our appointee decided that he wanted to be done with his service and has stepped down. And for that position, I would like to propose to you Ryan Snow for appointment. Mr. Snow is here, if you have any questions for him, but I just would like to briefly introduce him to you. He's currently serving as the city manager for Providence City, and he's been there for a few years. Prior to that, he served as the city manager for Roosevelt. During that time, he also managed their airport, about, I think, four and a half years that he was there overseeing the city and the airport. During that time, he gained a lot of experience with airports. He also, by the way, is a licensed pilot and has a plane at the airport. And during that time, he secured more than nine million dollars for the airport. I hope he can help us do some similar things here in grants and such. Prior to his experience as a city manager and airport manager, he also, he worked in, in the infrastructure industry and worked for companies that built runways even. So, oh, and one more thing, he's a CPA. So I think he's very well qualified for this position to help us on the board, has the financial experience, the management experience, the government experience, the airport experience, the, the infrastructure experience. So I'm really excited and thankful that he's willing to serve, and I would present those two names to the council at this time for your advice and consent.
All right. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yeah?
Is this appointment a full-time job, or is this something that he keeps his full-time job and this is a, a board that he serves on?
Correct. We, we meet at most once a month, or about an hour.
And the term length?
I believe it's a two-year term. They're both two-year terms. However, one that Mr. Snow is being appointed to will expire at the end of this year.
Because it's a midterm.
It's a, it's a midterm because the previous incumbent stepped down early.
Good questions. Anything else?
Oh, maybe for the new council members, I'll just point out, this is the, no, it's the Logan Cash Airport Authority Board. And so the airport is owned by the county and Logan City jointly. Logan City has appointees on the board also, as well as Cash County. And, and there are appointees at large, as Mr. Snow will be, representing the county, and then the city has an appointee at large also.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. Thank you, Councilmember Ward, for adding that. The city has their mayor and a council member who sit, and then we have myself and, and a council member, Mr. Ward, who sit, and then a citizen, they have a citizen, and then there's one citizen at large that the board picks, the Airport Authority Board picks. And he's currently serving as our chair, as John Care.
Oh, okay.
So he'd be representing the citizen?
Yeah.
Portion that, okay.
Very good. All right, do we?
Just moved to approve. I moved to approve those appointments.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved that we.
We didn't ask Carl, care of Carl. Would you like?
Okay, great, good.
We haven't got, we haven't got the assignment yet.
Okay, it's been moved and approved that we approve the appointments, reappointment of Carl Ward and the new appointment of Ryan Snow to the Logan Cash Airport Authority Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. Just a few more things for my, under other items, well, the December twenty-twenty-two expense report has been provided to the council. And then, under other items, just would like to say Happy New Year to everybody and looking forward to this new year. Like to thank the voters for entrusting us with this opportunity. Welcome to our three new council members, and we had a couple of other countywide elected officials who were elected last year and are now starting their term. It's, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to serve this great community, and just want to express once again my gratitude to the voters and to my family, and most especially to my wife for her support. I just wanted to briefly, I know there will be a discussion later about council member goals, but I just wanted to briefly mention that my number one goal for this year is, is to have a, a great collaborative working relationship with the council. My goal is to have teamwork, to have cooperation, to have communication and collaboration, and I look forward to working with all of you toward that end. Thank you very much for your service. Just a couple of other items that I would like to give an update on. I served as the chair of the Homeless Council for last year and the year before, and finished my term as chairman. And just would like to thank that group for the great work that they do. They would welcome any involvement from, from you and the council. It's kind of a, a little bit of an informal group, and they, they welcome anyone and everyone who wants to help with the effort. So if any of you would like to help, you're welcome to do so. And there is a special opportunity coming up in the next few weeks to, to help out. The annual point in time count will be occurring, and if you would like to help with that, there is some training coming up, and I, I sent an email to the council with a link to that information, if you'd like to go through the training and participate in the count. It's, it's an eye-opening experience. I highly recommend it if you have not done it before. Just to give a report on the Cash Waste Consortium, the Cash Waste Consortium had an executive council meeting as well as a full meeting within the past week, and we are moving forward with selecting a waste hauler for, for the consortium. And I think we're making good progress with that. I just want to thank everybody who has helped with that, including council members Erickson and Gunnel, who serve on that consortium as well. I, I just wanted to report that I met with our, our county emergency manager within the past week, and we discussed a number of trainings and drills that we would like to hold this year. One of those trainings will be a training specifically for elected officials, and we'd like to invite city council members and mayors to participate in that in addition to our county elected officials. So he does not have a date picked yet, but he will be working on that. So I just would like to encourage all of you to participate in that training when, when he provides that. I think you'll find it to be helpful and informative. I also attended, as did Councilmember Erickson, a Connecting Utah meeting. It was held here in this room on Friday, and Connecting Utah is, is working on ensuring that as many Utahns as possible have broadband internet access. And one of the things they are asking for people to do is to conduct a speed test of their own, from their own internet connection, so that the state, the state's Connecting Utah group can gather data about internet speed availability, broadband availability. And that speed test can be found at speedtest.utah.gov, and they're encouraging everyone to do it and to encourage others to do it, share it on your social media, speedtest.utah.gov. They will then use the information they gather to determine which areas are most in need of broadband access and, and move forward with working to get that broadband access installed. We had a, a meeting in town yesterday where Speaker Brad Wilson from the Utah House of Representatives came up here. A number of leaders were present, a council member, Sandy Goodlander, was there, and Councilmember Catherine Buse was there as well. And it was a, a great, a great opportunity to hear from him about the legislative priorities that our legislature plans to start working on next Tuesday. It, it was nice. We did get a shout-out from the, the speaker about our Housing Crisis Task Force report, which was very nice of him to recognize. And I, I would love to have, perhaps in the near future, a presentation here of that report. Maybe Councilmember Goodlander would like to participate in that. She's done several of those presentations. I also attended a presentation today by Jeff Gilbert, the executive director of our Cash Metropolitan Planning Organization, and he gave an update to some community leaders about transportation projects that are underway, a number of, of projects from the north to south and east to west around the valley. And I think it would be great if he came and gave that presentation to the council as well. I think you would all find it very interesting and informative. I did talk to him and ask him if he'd be willing to do that after his presentation, and he said he would be, he would love to do that. So if you're interested, I think that would be very helpful. There is, this Friday, a Cash Rich Local Work Group meeting hosted by the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food that will be held at our event center at ten o'clock, and if you'd like to attend that, I think it would be great if you'd like to participate in that. It's the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food is having a working group meeting this Friday at ten. And then the last item I have, sorry for the long list, it's, it's been a busy couple of weeks. The last item I have is our legislative session, as I mentioned, will kick off next Tuesday, and I circulated a list that we've been working on over the last couple of months of some legislative priorities. If you have any input on those, those priorities that we've gathered from our department heads and, and executive branch elected officials, I'd love to hear any input you might have as soon as possible because Tuesday is off to the races. That concludes my report. Thank you once again, and that's it.
Hey, thank you, Executive Zook, I appreciate that. All right, moving on to items of special interest, election of council chair and vice chair for two thousand twenty-three.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dave Erickson as chair and yourself, Barbara Tidwell as vice chair.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we elect David Erickson as council chair and myself, Barbara Tidwell, as vice chair for two thousand twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Very good, okay, thank you. So, Mr. Erickson, you'll get to sit in the seat next, next meeting. I would like to say that this is probably, this past year is probably one of the hardest things that I've done, being a chair of this council, other than maybe serving the women in my church for over five years at one time. But I have learned a lot. I've gained a lot of respect for each and every one of you. I feel like that we were able to work together as a council and hope that in the future that we can work well together with all members that are seated around up here. It was a hard time, but I think we, with some meetings that we've had, that I think a lot of things are being voiced and that we can move on in a positive way.
I'd like to say a sincere thank you for your time you spent. You did amazing, and it's much appreciated, so thank you.
Yeah, Barbara, I second that.
Thank you.
Phenomenal job.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. I have appreciated it. All right, we're, move on to item B, Bear River Mental Health Audited Financial Statements. Mr. Johnson, you are going to make a presentation for us.
I have hard copies, if anyone is interested in getting a hard copy.
I'd listen better to your wife if she presented.
Thank you, I almost printed it, so. Thank you.
Not having to navigate, not trying to copy this is better for.
Eight, twenty-two.
Definitely worth the reading, I mean, definitely worth the time.
Thanks, Ryan. Rob Johnson from Bear River Mental Health, Chief Financial Officer there. I'd like to take you through some of the highlights of this audit. So each year, Utah State Code says that a member of the Bear River Mental Health Executive Committee will come and present the audit to the county council. And then, at the end, if you feel so inclined, you can move to accept the audit and then sign this certificate that you've had an opportunity to have the audit presented and ask any questions. Let's start on page five. This is the independent auditor's report. So in the second paragraph there, under the opinion, the auditor states, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Bear River Mental Health Services, Inc., as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-one, and the changes in its net assets and its cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So they're saying there that it's a clean audit. I'd like to also point out a couple of things and a couple of other there communications. On page twenty-five, this is their report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. In the bottom paragraph there on page twenty-five, it says, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies or internal control, in internal control that were considered to be material weaknesses." On the next page, on page twenty-six, at the bottom of the first paragraph there, "The results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under general, under government auditing standards." Then on the next page is the, their report to our board of directors, and there, right above that bold plan, scope, and timing of the audit, they, they write this and address whether they had any issues during the audit, and they say there, "We did not identify any significant control deficiencies and other matters during our, or other matters during our audit." So it was a clean audit. I'd like to just take you through a couple of the financial highlights, back to page nine, statement of financial position or the balance sheet. Halfway down there, you can see under liabilities and net assets, there's an unexpended county funds. We're on a state fiscal year, and you guys operate on the calendar year, so our budget times don't match up. So we're asking for an amount for you to appropriate each year before the legislature has met and decided what they're going to give us, and you are required to match twenty percent of the state funds. So if you ever put more in your budget than we need to meet that twenty percent match, it goes onto our balance sheet as unexpended county funds, which you can use at a later date, at a different year. And of that eighty thousand four fifty-eight, Cash County's portion of that is eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And like I say, each year, if you put more in than we need for the exact twenty percent match, it falls here to the balance sheet. You can see that our total assets at the end of the year was up to sixteen, sixteen point six million. Onto page nine, statement of activities. This is our income statement. First section, government support. You can see that our federal funds were not quite double, but up a couple hundred thousand dollars over two thousand twenty-one. We had a few new federal grants, but the big portion is we had some ARPA funding that was given to us that came through the division to give to our employees as retention pay to try and keep some of, it's been hard to keep therapists employed and working for us. Then if you move down there to the county, you can see that county funds, that four hundred and seventy thousand from Cash Rich and Box Elder County. And I say this each year, if you look at our funding as a inverted pyramid, the county funds are there at the bottom. They are, you, you are required to give a twenty percent match for the state funds, and then we take those state and county funds and we match Medicaid with those. And that four hundred and seventy thousand that the counties put in allows us to provide, you know, we have about eight, over eighteen million dollars to provide services in the three counties, and it would be a much different organization without those county funds. So thank you, Cash County, for always being willing to make your required twenty percent match to the, to the state, with the state funding. Right there under the, the next set of revenues, the big increase in our revenues was with Medicaid. You can see that in two thousand and twenty-one, we were just a little over ten million, and in two thousand and twenty-two, just under fourteen million. The, we did have Medicaid expansion that happened here in the, a few years ago. That has added eligibles to our roles in the county. But also, the public health emergency, under the public health emergency Medicaid, CMS has said that the, the states cannot drop anyone from the roles while they're under the public health emergency. So the roles have grown, and we've had significantly more Medicaid money to expand. That should be coming to an end here, and the roles should start shrinking again, but through this year, they were, they were large. Our net income, as you can see, was three point three million. That is a significant amount. It's eighteen point one percent of our revenues. We do fall in line with the rest of the mental health centers. The other rural mental health centers, Four Corners was seventeen point seven percent, Central nineteen point seven, and Northeastern twenty-six point three. So we're not out of line with the rest of the centers in the state. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
That increase, does that count any of the ARPA money for the net increase, or no? On the.
Net asset increase from, up to three million from last year, or twenty-five point nine?
Yes, yes.
How much of that is ARPA?
Well, not as much as you would think. There was a hundred and six thousand in the, in the state funding, and there's a, there's about five hundred thousand in that Medicaid, but it's, it's, you know, it's not even three quarters of a million dollars, Councilman.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah.
Can I ask what it means when it says without donor restrictions? Can you explain that?
So, we're a nonprofit organization, and if, some, sometimes you get money donated with a restriction on what it could be used for. So that says that there's no restriction on any of those fundings.
You mentioned that the, that we are to basically appropriate some monies before the sessions start, right?
Right.
What is the purpose of that? Why before?
Well, it's only because of when, you're, you're budgeting in September and October, and the session doesn't start till January, so we're giving you our best guess of what we're gonna need for twenty-three, even before the session happens.
But it's not required.
No.
Okay. You just said that we, you know, that you, that we were to, and I thought.
No, it's not a requirement, but it is a, it's just.
I was kind of curious what that, what that trigger was before the session.
Yeah, just helps with your budget timing and.
Looking for this, you know, when you're asking down the state, saying that we've got committed dollars already, and now we'd like you to help us out.
We do not, we do not go to them and say that.
Okay, well, you could, though, right?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, council, Mr. Johnson?
I have one more. The firm that audits it, how long have they been audited, or do you have any policy that you rotate auditors every so often, or what?
We do not have a policy that we rotate every so often. This is their fourth year in a five-year contract.
But you do rebid every five years?
We have rebid the last fi, the last couple of five-year terms. It's not required to do that. That's up to our board to decide.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Johnson, thank you. Appreciating that to us.
You can pass it.
Yeah, pass that around, thank you.
I moved to approve the audit review of Bear River Mental Health, it's been provided to us.
Second there.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the audit that's been presented to us by Mr. Ron Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. All right, Sheriff, do you mind if we move to the, set the public hearings first?
Please.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go down. We're going to go down to number nine to set a couple of public hearings. First one is set a public hearing for January 24th for ordinance 2023-01 on Denali South Rezone. A request to rezone 12.13 acres from the agricultural ATM zone to the rural five, RU5 zone located at 3388 South Highway 23 near Wellsville. Is someone?
Move, move to set the public hearing for ordinance 2023-01, Denali South Rezone for January 24th meeting.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that we set the public hearing for January 24th, 2023, regarding ordinance 2023-01 for the Denali South Rezone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next one, we need to set a public hearing for January 24th, 2023, ordinance 2023-02, amending Title 17, Section 17.07.040, general definitions, density and developable acreage. A request to remove public parts and rights away from density calc, calculations.
So move. I'll second.
Been moving and seconded that we set a public hearing for January 24th, 2023, regarding ordinance 2023-02, amending Title 17, Section 17.07.040, general definitions, density and developable acreage. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, Sheriff. If you'd like to give us an update on the animal shelter, we'd appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. You're probably sickening me giving updates and like, we're almost there, we're almost there. But I'll say it one more time, we're almost there. It is Groundhog Day, it seems like it, I'm not kidding you. Um, the one piece we're waiting for, the rooftop unit, that did get installed right before Christmas. Um, that was the last big piece of equipment we were waiting for. The other thing that was, we've been waiting for, but is now here are the commercial washer and dryer, which is being installed on Tuesday. Um, the HVAC group has been back. They have balanced the system, um, in writing that report, which is what Logan City needs so they can do our final inspection. So that's, that's really the point we're at. Um, we've done the, the punch list and walked through with the construction company. The plumbers have been back through, the electricians have been back through, changed a couple of things that we asked them to change and fix that didn't pass our inspection. So the plumbers, the electricians are done. The doors, with the system being balanced now, some doors are a little hard to open, and some doors will slam shut and knock your arms off because the system wasn't balanced when they were there. But they're coming next week to get all the doors readjusted. So really, the only thing we're doing now is I haven't put it out for, um, like a, an open house to the public because we haven't hired all the staff yet. And I, I put off hiring the staff not knowing when the opening date was gonna be and not having a bunch of staff with nothing to do. So we'll bring, probably bring them on board within the next two weeks, do a couple of weeks training. And during that time, we'll have our final inspection. We'll open it up to, um, to, uh, public tours, and then we'll look for a, an opening date.
Awesome.
Did we get a name for the street? Is it still Jensen Boulevard, or what did we come up with?
Well, you know, that's a, no, it's certainly not that. Right now, it's still 1165 Gateway. But one thing I did find out during the process of this is my office, the sheriff's office, was listed as Gateway 20 years ago when we built the thing. We've never used the address 1225 Gateway. It's always been 1225 West Valley View. So I guess theoretically, the road's name is Gateway. If you type in the sheriff's office address and say Gateway, the maps will take you right to the office. So I think unless you really wanna get into that of changing the name of that road, the easier thing to be, might start using the sheriff's office real address rather than calling it something that it truly never has been. We've been called Valley View Drive, which we're not on Valley View Drive. We've been called 200 North, which we're not 200 North. We're not 300 North. We're some weird little street off the side. So I think Gateway is probably the right address for the whole street.
Good question. Any other questions for the Sheriff?
When do you plan your opening date? When do you think that will be?
Um, I'd like to say by the first, but I don't know if I can get the staff on board and trained. Um, I would think by the middle of February. We could be done sooner. And I think once we get the final inspection, um, we'll probably bring the animals over from New Vision because all the cities who have been contracting with New Vision, their contracts are up. New Vision's not pressing them to redo contracts because we are just at that point. So we may have some animals and stuff in there as we transition New Vision into the facility before we actually have an opening date.
Do you plan on having a special, um, go through for like council members and council employees or anything like that, or?
Yeah.
General public?
Yeah, well, I think there'll be like, there'll actually be like three different groups that come through. So I'd like to do one specifically for the county council elected officials. There'll be one for, um, the public safety and law enforcement side of it. We got some work and some training to do with the other animal control groups throughout the valley who's gonna be using that facility. And then open it up to the public for a few nights. So anybody from the public who wants to see it, love to have them down and be part of it.
And to Sheriff? Anything else for the Sheriff? All right, thank you so much.
Jake, am I allowed to ask a question? Is it okay?
It's not a.
It's not a public hearing, no. You can maybe visit with him after.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, I, I appreciate the support of the Council very much. This, this has been a project that it seems like it never ends. And there's been, this is, and any time in history to build something, this has been the absolute two worst years. That thing has literally sat empty, untouched for months, waiting for one piece of equipment. It's sat empty, waiting for concrete. I mean, it's just, it's gonna be, it's a great project. The building, when you guys see it completed, you're gonna love it. It's, it's gonna be functional and well-received throughout the county. But it wouldn't have happened without the support of the Council. So thank you for that, and thank you for your patience. And we'll get open as soon as we can make it happen.
I think you deserve a big thanks for really putting up with it and keeping right with it. So thank you. We appreciate you too.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. Moving on. We do not have any Board of Equalization matters at this point. No pending actions, so going down to 11A. A proposal for consideration of action, Resolution 2023-01, a resolution updating the Cash County Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual regarding merit increases. And should I just read the second one, Amy? Because you're gonna address both of them. Resolution 2023-02, a resolution updating the Cash County Personnel Policy and Procedure Man, Manual Regarding At-Will Employee Classifications. And we have Amy here from Human Resources.
Thank you for having me, Council. And looking through compensation this year, we found that due to the COLA increase that was given to employees, we have a handful of employees that are at the top of their pay range. And as the, um, policy states now, they would not be eligible for a merit increase because that would increase their base pay. So what you have before you is, um, an addition to that policy as a number three there. This is different than what's in your, on your iPad because it did go to Ordinance and Policy Review Committee this morning, and there were some edits that were made. So this is hot off the press. So, um, I apologize for the timeliness. Generally, I like to have this ready to go for you and in your packet so that you can review it completely before. But because merit increases will be given on the next paycheck that employees will receive on January 20th, that's why we needed to push this through quickly. And the Ordinance and Policy Review Committee happened to fall on the same date as a council meeting. So my apologies. Hopefully, that won't happen again. So, um, on number three, I'll just read that to you. It says, "Should an employee be at the top of the pay range for their position, they may receive a cash payment of up to 1% of their annual pay rate in place of the merit increase or as the merit increase. This one-time payment will not change the base pay rate of the employee." And so, um, the thought process behind that is that in January, when other merit increases are given to base rates for employees, those that are at the top of their pay range would receive up to a 1%. And that would be determined by the department head based on their performance appraisal. So, um, the handful of people that are at that top of their range are seasoned employees that have been here for at least 15 or more years. And so we would expect them to be at the top of their range. But that COLA just kind of put them further ahead than where we would expect them to be had we not received that COLA. So that's the reason that we're running into this issue. So I'm happy to address any questions.
This would basically have the effect of a bonus, right? Because it's not moving their base pay up so that next year we're recalculating that on there. So.
Yeah.
In easiest terms.
I don't know that I like to call it a bonus, but maybe a, a premium, a longevity pay or something like that, yes.
Saying from the effect of it is not.
It won't affect their base pay, so next year. Yes. And then next year, when we do our compensation studies, generally what's happened in the five years that I've been here, the market continues to adjust up, right?
Do you have a number or percent of our employees that are in this category?
Um, we have five people. Yes. And two of them are part-time, three of them are full-time. So, um, the, the total amount, as I looked at that without benefits, would be about $2,500 total for all five of those employees, so.
The only change that was made this morning in ordinance policy review was the word "will" to "may" receive. You know, because it.
And we also changed the "up to" because it, it did say just, it did say 1%, but we changed it to say "up to 1%."
So if the market value didn't, if it wasn't adjusted for the next year, would they have to be re-nominated for that merit increase for the following year? It's not something automatic?
Right. So they would still continue to do their performance evaluation annually. And then as we're looking at the market, if the market has stayed the same and it hasn't moved anywhere, and they're still above the, the top of their pay range, then this would be in effect again. Their base rate would not change, but they would be eligible for up to that 1%.
Amy, uh, just to clarify, it says one time. And I, I think what that means is that it doesn't change their base pay.
Correct.
Going, however, is it possible that an employee, the same employee, could have this happen to them more than one time in subsequent years?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I noticed that, I think the only change I could see from what we had in our packet was on paragraph three on the second page. There's not a sentence that says, "and is subject to the approval of funds for such increases by the county council and budgetary limitations."
Yes, so part of that was, um, we changed in that sec, uh, let's see. It's the first sentence where it says, "1% of their annual pay rate in place," or, yeah, "in place," and it should say "of the merit increase." That is a bad sentence that I wrote. I'm really apologize reading that out loud. So it would be "in place of the merit increase."
Amy, I think to, to answer his question, in number one on that page, it already says that sentence.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution, um.
It's initial. So we gotta waive the rules?
We gotta waive the rules, yeah.
Could I also ask that as you put this before the Council, that you change that sentence that says "in place as the merit increase" and say "in place of the merit increase." That would make it speak better, make more sense.
And I will move that we, uh, waive the rules and approve Resolution 2023-01, resolution updating the Cash County Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual Regarding Merit Increases. What's the change of the?
I will second that.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and approve Resolution 2023-01 with, um, the 1% annual pay raise for those who are past their base rate, correct? And we will be changing the wording in that one sentence, changing "as" to "of." All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Amy, the next one.
The next one, it looks like I gave out all my copies. Were there any extras at the end of the row?
Take mine and I'll share.
Thank you.
Share.
Sure. Thanks.
Sorry about that. As we were, uh, looking to, um, hire a new director for the CJC, the Children's Justice Center, it was pointed out that, um, in our Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, that, um, that position would be reporting to the executive. However, that position is appointed by the, the county attorney. And that is the way that it, it is throughout the state. And so, uh, we, as we were looking at that section, we also found a few other items that were no longer pertinent that needed to be adjusted. So, um, you'll see there in the box, I just took it all out and just said, okay, we're just gonna start over. Just made it a lot cleaner. So, um, as appointed or at-will employees um, under the county, or under the Executive's Office, those are listed there, those have not changed. The only addition would be the Chief Deputy County Executive there. And also adding in the Director of Public Works as that was not there before. Then as we also were looking at things, there are other appointed positions by elected officials that needed to be pointed out in the policy. And so under each elected office is the appointed position that would be reporting to that elected office. And you can see there that most of them are chief deputies. And also includes for the Attorney's Office, the Director of the Children's Justice Center. And then for the Council, the policy analyst would be considered an at-will or appointed employee. Are there any questions?
All right. Motion?
Move to waive the rules and approve Resolution 2023-02.
I will.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2023-02. Did I say waive the rules? Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Amy. Appreciate your work on that. All right, moving on to 12. A review of 2022 council goals. Do we have those? Do we have those?
Well, I know one that I didn't get done. Davenport Road still isn't there.
Yeah.
Yep.
We don't have a list of those. No, we don't, we don't currently have a list here. Just as a, by, a way of review for the new council members, usually at the beginning of the year, we have, as council members, set goals that we individually would like to work on, correct? And, and we have not really, done really good with keeping those updated. So we're starting a new year, and.
Do we want to give some time?
Yeah, that, I was gonna say, I think we ought to give some time to everyone.
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks, or, you know, until our next meeting. I will say that I have one, like Carl, that I didn't accomplish, and that was to visit the different municipalities of the county at least one of their council meetings. And I did not accomplish that at all. So that will probably remain one of my goals. But I agree with Councilman Erickson that we should give everyone a couple weeks to take a look and think about maybe some of the things that they would like to accomplish on, as their time on the board, I mean, on the council. And so we'll say that, we'll let it go unless we have anybody that wants to make another comment again on the 2022 goals. Yeah, all right.
Have a report on your 2022 goal?
Uh, no, nothing to report.
He's not elected, is he?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm gonna lose my page.
Again, we'll wait on the 2023 council member goals, and then let's look at the 2023 council member boards, committees, and department assignments, and you should have a paper there in front of you, and we would like to discuss some of these items here and go down, and if anybody has any questions along the way or any comments, please don't be afraid to speak up. As you can see, there is an X under the name of the person that serves either on that board or on that committee. Is there, and these have been changed to add the new members, of course, because of those who are no longer serving on the council. So are there, does anyone have any input to what they have been, where they have a mark on their name, or do any of the other council members have any input that they'd like to give to us?
Yeah, I want to be on the recreation committee.
Ever. What's that?
I want to be on the recreation committee. I'm gonna start one.
I was gonna say, where is that?
You are the recreation.
I'm starting.
Party club.
Yeah. Okay, Carl, were you going to say something?
I was just gonna say, I'd like to just remain on the ones I've been on.
Okay. I might, I will say, the sheriff has gone, but there has been a new committee that has been meeting that was told to us by the last legislature that we were to have that, and it's the CJC committee. And Sandy and I, we just, we've had two meetings, Sandy and I have been meeting with that, on that, but what it is, is mostly they want to know what the county is doing with all the different agencies in the valley, such as even the city, police department, the attorneys, who else is in that, Dave?
We have representatives from the Mental Health Authority, from Bear River Health Department, from adult probation and parole, and from the First District and Logan Justice Courts.
And Judge Edwards has been serving on that also, and we are to submit a report to the head, who was the guy who?
So the report goes to.
Thank you. Okay, good. So anyway, as I understand it, and tell me if I'm wrong, the council chair was to serve on that committee. And so where we've changed, so that will mean now that David will need to serve on that committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And David, I'll talk to you about that, yes. It is not on the list, but it's the CJC committee.
CJCC.
CJCC.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask about one other one also.
Okay.
On the Cache Waste Consortium, there is two components to that. There's the executive committee, and then there's also a board. I would like to see Mr. Erickson on that, as his, he had been on the Solid Waste Board and has a lot of backing. I know that Zook and I are on here, Mr. Zook, but I think that's casting out the executive committee rather than just the board, because there's two entities in there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and the Solid Waste Board is basically being dissolved here.
Yeah, so I think we need to have Mr. Erickson on there as well.
Okay, which, I'm sorry, Nolan, where?
Cache Waste Consortium, that's the garbage group, that's the second page right here.
Right, the second page?
Fourth to the bottom, fifth to the bottom.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't know, I bring it up from that point, I mean.
It might be clearer to just list both of them separately, the consortium and the executive.
Okay.
Body.
Because that may, that may be switched around in the future, won't it, so.
Yep.
Okay, so we're adding another committee, what is the name of that committee?
Well, there's the exec committee, and then there's just the broad committee, or we're not calling it a board.
Yeah, one should just be CWC Board, and the other one can just be CWC Executive Board.
Okay.
Be, say that again, executive.
Cache Waste Consortium, CWC.
Okay.
So CWC Board.
Executive Board.
And CWC Executive Board.
Okay, so on the executive board, who is serving other than Executive Zook? Is that you?
Yes, but then we would also be on the board too.
Okay.
With Dave.
Okay, so there would be three of you on the board?
Right.
Okay.
There's another one on the UAC Governing Board, Barbara.
Yes.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Barbara was going to, I don't know, we talked at one time, Barbara, you wanted to actually take my place?
Yes, I'm interested.
And then Mark, yours was actually one that was put on there because of an election of Gina when she was on it, and so that would be dissolved. I don't think that one there would not exist because of, unless you want to run down and get elected real quick to be president, so. So we could move Barbara, your, my, my X goes over to you on the UAC Governing Board, so.
Thank you. Um, let me look at something. So I think it might be good if we went through names individually and just make sure that everyone's clear on what they're serving on. Is that all right with everyone? So we have Cache County Budget Committee, we have Mark on the Cache County Budget Committee. First page, actually, the front page, it's about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight down. Okay, Mark, you're agreeable to that?
Yes.
And then down, also, we're gonna continue with Mark on the way down, Cache County Economic Development Advisory Board.
Yes.
If any of, if any of you want to change, you want, you know, say, hey, I.
Please speak up.
Expertise, speak up, we can flip coins, we can do whatever, so.
And then, Mark?
Barbara, to that note.
Yes.
Are we limited to how many council members can serve on each board just to not form a quorum?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So it's three.
Three is the most.
Okay.
Good, yeah, good question.
Well, not necessarily, we would just have to post it as a meeting, and some of them require that anyway. So it just depends if you want to do that.
Sure, simpler motive.
Yeah, just to.
Limit it to three.
Right. Okay, now, again, Cache County Fairgrounds Advisory Board, that was something that Gina was on. Mark, are you wanting to serve on that?
Yes.
Anybody else? You really want that one, okay. Cache County Library Board of Directors, Mark?
Yeah, good with that.
Good, I'll give that to you, there you go.
Is that a bill of pay?
Yeah. All right, and then turning the page over, please, then we have the Cache Valley Visitors' Bureau Advisory Board.
I'm good with it, but I need to be introduced to what that entails, so.
All right, information, the IT Advisory Board.
What's that?
All right, Ordinance and Policy Review Committee. Public Relations Committee.
Ubat.
All right, and we changed the UAT. All right, if each of you would just take a few minutes, look under your name, go down, if you want to make any changes, let us know, because I think we can make this process faster than going individually through it. I do have a question, what's the Cache County Boundary Commission, David?
You don't want to be on that one.
Okay.
I, I don't even want to be on that one. But that's where, when you have cities that are fighting over the same annexation, you know, and, and you basically have to decide about it.
So we don't have anybody?
Are you a voting member of the CMPO?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no one, you made no one happy, I can promise you.
That is, the CMPOs, no council.
But if you liked, hey, Barbara, if you like, I will, hey.
Nope, you can.
I thought so.
Okay, there's been a question brought up, the second one from the bottom on the front page, no one from the council serves on the Cache Metropolitan Planning Organization, the CMPO, is that correct?
I would be interested in serving on that if.
Well, there's, there's not a seat for a council member there.
It's just the executives and the mayor, mayors.
Yeah, it's, it's the mayors of ten cities, and the executive as, as well as a representative from UDOT, a representative from the legislature, which is Senator Wilson, the UDOT representative is Ronger Menlove, who serves on the Transportation Commission. So there are specific seats, and there is a specific seat for the county executive, but there are not extra seats for the council.
But we can attend and just look.
We can attend, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions on anything?
So you just want me to take over what Paul's doing?
Not necessarily. If you don't want to, then you let us know.
I had talked to Amy Atkins, the city council, is it Amy?
Anderson.
Amy Anderson, I have too many Amys in my life, and they all have a last name that starts with A, about being on the homeless council, working on the Bear River Local Homeless Council.
Bear River Homeless Council.
It's on the second page, about the fourth one down.
Oh, okay.
I would be happy to do that.
All right, are we okay to add?
You want to add that one, or Carl, you want to give away?
Um.
You want to become homeless?
What's that?
I don't think you want to become homeless.
You want to come homeless? I signed up for Pitt Count already, but.
That's, that's one that does not have a limit, if all of you wanted to go to that.
Sandy, we'll be happy to put you.
Okay.
Okay, we're adding Sandy to that, thank you. All right, I'm still looking at some of mine.
As a point of clarification, what is the North Park Interlocal Cooperative Governing Board?
That's related to the ice arena.
If anybody wants that from me, I'm willing to trade.
Hey, you could, you could go skating when you go there.
Oh, it doesn't even exist anymore.
So I, I wondered about that, too, would it make sense where that is?
Makes sense for Mark.
North East District to be there, but at the same time.
But you can't take Hardware Ranch from me.
Isn't there only, I believe, there's only one year, isn't, isn't that, this is the last year?
Yeah, there's significant changes coming to that as well, so.
Yeah, that's, I thought that's a, it's basically the last, you know, because they, they take a big dip out of the RAPS tax stuff, you know, initially and stuff, and I think that's.
This is the last year, I think.
I believe this is the last year, that when we talked, they had one more year last year, so.
I, I am very familiar with it from the perspective of Hyde Park City Council in the past, and so I think it'd be a pretty easy thing to take on if you don't want it, Catherine.
Benefited from it in Hyde Park, but you've suffered from it, didn't you?
There's, yes, I'll just agree, yes.
All right, so we will take Catherine off of that and add Mark, correct?
Mark, that gives you 10. Are you, are you really, like Gina was quite involved, is there some that you would like to?
Correct, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to be on the Hardware Ranch, that's my area as well.
I just hope the meetings take place on a sleigh.
The people who run the sleigh are my neighbors, so.
Hardware Ranch, where is that one?
Second one.
Third.
Third on the back page.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, are you serious?
Yeah.
Nolan, okay, very good.
I can go cut an elk when I'm up there.
Okay, very good. I would like to know if someone would like to serve on the Trails Committee.
I will.
Wait, will you, Catherine?
Yeah, also, I'm interested in the RAPS Committee.
Okay.
Okay, the, the RAPS Committee, the way that one is composed is the county executive and two council members, and then from, from each of the districts that don't have a council member, a citizen. So the way we've had it is Dave Erickson and Barbara Tidwell have been the council representatives, so one of them would have to move off for us to be able to put another council member.
Well, we'd also have to check and see if there's a representative citizen from their dis, from their.
Right.
District.
Yeah, so right now, we, we just checked with all of the people who served last year, and all of them are willing to continue serving except for the one from Councilmember Abuse's district. So if Councilmember Abuse is not put on there, then I need to work with you, Catherine, to find somebody from your district to appoint.
That would be three council, and we are the ones that do the final approval, I think that might be a little.
Well, in, in the, in the county code, it says two council members for that one, so.
And then Catherine would appoint someone from her district, is that what you're?
If it's not me, I would, I would find somebody to appoint from her.
Yeah, I, I do the appointment, but I would work with you to find somebody, and I would bring that back to council.
He was good.
Is there room for another council member on the tour, the Visitors Bureau Advisory Board?
Okay, so you will work with Executive Zook on that, Catherine?
I'm not on it unless one of you two back down is what it is.
And I, I chose to continue to be on it.
Do you want to keep doing that, Dave, the RAPS?
Well, I just don't want the, here we go, the big windfall of change, and then you're gonna have to get one from here back, and I guess you'd get one from my area. I'd like to go one more year on that, if possible.
Okay, and what was your question, Sandy?
Is there room for another council member on the Visitors Bureau Advisory Board?
If you would like that one, Sandy, that'd be fine, if you want to just switch or drop me from that and you can have it, but.
Okay, you, you've got like nine or 10, I hope you're not.
Well, and, and I looked into that, and for the most part, I don't think there, they didn't appear to be committees that would meet every month.
Okay.
Ordnance Policy Review, we meet often.
That one meets frequent.
Once a month, yes, on that.
So, I mean, it, it looked like I could balance it, Sandy, but I appreciate the concern.
So, but on the Cache Valley, Cache Valley Visitors Bureau, then we're gonna put Sandy in place of you.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, or anything on there? Everybody else happy with what they're doing?
And it doesn't mean that they can't be changed in the interim if, if something comes up.
Right.
Why don't we make a little changes and have a fresh copy for us next?
Next week.
For everybody to look at.
For our real next meeting, rather.
Anyone has an epiphany between now and then?
Yeah, and then what is the process for letting these people know that we are serving on their boards? Will they contact us as far as meetings and, and getting involved, or do we need to reach out?
Each one is different.
Okay.
It just depends, if, if, I can go through them with you if you want and let you know, because some of them are internal, some of them are external organizations, for example, the homeless council, that's an external organization.
Okay.
So each one has kind of a different answer to that question, but I'd be happy to help any of you who have questions, I can get you in touch with the people I need to talk to.
Okay.
And the home, just to make you aware, the homeless meets the first Tuesday of every month.
First Tuesday? What time?
Three o'clock.
Everly involved in that one.
I'll prepare a chart for this time.
Okay.
Along with these.
Two weeks, let's just.
And Catherine, the, oh, I'm sorry.
That's a good one, that's a.
So I just take all of them?
Yeah.
If you're comfortable.
I am, I am.
We showed cows all through.
I know you do.
Just so you're aware, Catherine, the Trails Committee meets most normally the second Tuesday of every month at noon.
Bring your water bottle.
Yeah, and your hiking shoes.
What's the difference between the Audit Committee and the Budget Committee?
The Budget Committee works on the budget, and the Audit Committee works on the audit of our finances.
Okay.
That's one I could send it to.
That's a good question.
I should have probably figured that out, is that what it's called?
All right, then is this okay with everyone, the way we have this set up? All right, if so, then we will look at having a new list on our next meeting on the 24th, correct? And if, like, and like Councilman Erickson said, if you decide you want to do something else or whatever, just let us know, and we can get that change made. All right, very good, moving on, the 2023 General Session of the 65th Legislature.
How about the department assignments?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we need to.
Department assignments.
I, I have one request. Paul was on Finance, Human Resources, Public Defender, and Planning.
I'd like to have.
And I'm only the assessor, I'd like to have Finance added to my department assignment.
I'd like to have, and I'm only the assessor. I'd like to have Finance added to my, uh, department assignment.
Oh, gotcha.
You'd be good at that, Carl. You would be good at that.
So Carl, tell me again, I'm sorry.
Take Finance off of what was Paul's line.
Okay.
And put it on my line. I, I only have Assessor there.
That makes me happy, Carl. Thank you.
You know, and these are good to rotate. These are goo, these are good to, you know, rotate and go around to, to meet, you know, get all the departments and.
So, um, would it be appropriate where Sandy wants to be on the Visitors Bureau to ser, have her serve on the Visitors, Treasurer, Visitors Bureau, Victim Services, or do we need to take another look at that, or?
I'm happy to do whatever.
That may, that would make sense. Just switch.
Okay.
Put Mark.
Switch Mark and.
Are you okay with that, Mark, the Public Defender, Planning, Human Resources?
Yes, there sounds good.
Mark, where you're on the IT Committee, can I move IT to you as a department?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Certainly makes sense.
Can I make a suggestion? I, I'm not sure why my name is on here as a liaison to departments. And so, um, somebody should, one of you probably wants to be liaison to Public Works. Actually, it says that Gordon was.
It's me.
Me.
Yeah, actually, it's. There are three people listed for Public Works, at least, so.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And I, I don't need to be on here. I'm over all of those departments, so.
And I would say Development Services and Planning are equal.
Yeah, that was my other point. And then Planning's on here a couple of times as well.
So.
I would be interested in the Development Services or Planning.
Um. Dave, and Dave, you're going to continue with the Sheriff and the Solid Waste, correct?
Well, I am right now, but I'll, I'll take any. It doesn't, I'm, I'm game with anything, so.
So what?
I've, I've been on several of them. I'll keep going. It doesn't matter.
What, okay, um, Sheriff, what do, what is, how often do you meet with the Sheriff? Sheriff's gone.
Well, I usually buy him a hamburger twice a month, and no, no, it's, it's, it's very irregular.
Okay.
There's not a set time. It's a matter of, we talk when his needs need to be met.
Okay, awesome. Um, where's the county clerk? I've been serving.
It's next to you.
It's on you.
An auditor.
Yep.
Um, I think I might like a change on that. Would someone be willing to trade something on that?
You want the Sheriff?
Sure, I'll take the Sheriff.
Okay, let me keep Solid Waste, though.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And Carl, or who's doing Assessor now?
I am. I'll, I'll do Assessor. Uh, that seemed to work quite well. And Finance.
And Finance.
And Finance, okay.
Could I, um, Paul is with Human Resources. Could I go with Human Resources also?
That would be Mark now.
No, Mark, Mark, what do you think of the?
Sure.
Thank you.
But I wouldn't mind going back to the.
Left Mark.
I want to, I wouldn't mind.
Not sure what I've got left on this list.
Yes, I know, I won't.
And that one I'm going to stick with.
Barbara, will you let me go to the attorneys?
I would like to go to the attorneys.
You would?
Yeah, oh, where am I? Is that what you're asking me?
I would like to go to the attorneys.
Then you go to the attorneys.
Well, yeah, I gotta have funny friends to keep me out of jail.
Maybe we need a new, a new chart. Also, Barbara, could you detail what this means for duties and expectations of us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and.
Buy us an hamburger twice a month.
Yeah. All right, what you do is you set up, and as soon, now that you're on the council, the best thing to do is go visit with the heads of these departments, introduce yourself, and see what, maybe if they have any needs that you can help them with, and then possibly set up a timeframe of meetings, you know, maybe you want to meet once a quarter with them or whatever, and give them your information, contact information, so that they can get in touch with you. Am I missing anything, council members?
Essentially, what you would do is work as a liaison between the council and that department, and so, for example, like Amy had some proposals tonight, and whichever of you ends up being assigned to HR, as she's working on those proposals, she might meet with you as a council member and make sure you're aware of it, so that, so that you could convey to her maybe concerns that the council might have, or questions the council might have, and just help her to prepare as she brings that. Uh, some of these roles are fulfilled also by some of the committees. For example, we have an Ordnance and Policy Committee, or the IT Committee, or some of these various committees that kind of fulfill that role, where there are council members there, and they provide that feedback and information, but essentially, you're, you're a liaison to help them out if there are things they might need help from the council with.
And then you can report back to the council, you know, if there's some special needs or anything. Janine, did you get all that straight?
Thank you.
With everything that was changed? Awesome job, of course you did. Of course you did. So is everyone clear now?
No.
Okay.
Janine will send it to us and clarify.
All right, Janine, can you read to us what you have?
Um, so, let's see, Sandy, I've got Treasurer, Visitors Bureau, Victim Services.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, Barbara, I have you done for Sheriff and HR.
Correct.
And, uh, Mark, Public Defender, Planning, IT. David Erickson, Solid Waste, and Attorney.
And Attorney, yeah.
No, in that order, I mean, in that order.
I don't know. For us, Dan, if that's okay.
Nolan, I have you for Recorder, Public Works, and Planning.
Okay.
Carl, Assessor, Finance. And Catherine, I have you for Public Works, Development Services, and Planning.
I think I heard Planning twice, Mark.
Well, it's on there three times.
I think we had it on there for several of them to be, but.
Yeah, it's on there.
Planning was there twice and Development Services.
And we also have people on Planning for this, too, so we need to have it twice there.
I'm on Planning and Zoning. I'm happy to let somebody take that if that is wanted. I've been there a couple of years, but.
We, we could, or if you could, if you wanted to have one, you plan in zoning, like Councilmember Gunnell is, and another one be Development Services, like Catherine is, if you wanted to just label them differently, because that, those are different roles, even though they're the same department.
Are we missing any departments that have not been assigned to any of us? CJC?
I'll take CJC.
Sandy, I thought Sandy had that. She has Victim Services.
Is that not CJC?
Okay, thank you.
Where are you, where are you?
Who's assigned to Clerk Auditor?
That one did not get reasoned.
That's what, who would like to serve? Huh?
So, I don't have Planning. Is that what we settled on just fairly?
Does Mark not have Planning, or are we going to have two people for Planning?
Cause I had, yeah, you're right, I had that.
They got rid of one of them.
If, if that's the case, I'd do Clerk Auditor.
Agreeable to everyone?
Okay, very good. Mark, Clerk Auditor.
Any other departments we have not assigned?
I don't know. I think I'm CJC and Development Services.
Okay.
And.
Let's think this out. Planning and Development Services, having two in there, that's the same office. I mean, if I'm Planning and Zoning and Meeting, I pretty much am dealing with those guys in Development Services.
Yes, you are.
So I don't see why two are over that.
You could break it down this way, too, because Development Services has a couple of divisions within it. Planning is the largest division in there, but then there's also Code Enforcement, Building and Safety, GIS, so.
But you've got one manager over the group, or you essentially will have one manager over the group.
Yeah, so you could, if you guys wanted to, you could have you be over Planning and Zoning, and Catherine being over the rest of Development Services, whatever you guys want to do.
I think what you're saying is probably, because you have one manager over the whole group, you might as well just have one.
One liaison.
I agree.
Yeah, one liaison to that.
I agree.
Good point, Nolan, so.
And it's Nolan?
I guess.
Is that the same as Public Works, too? I mean, Public Works, Development Services, and Planning?
No, Public Works is separate.
Yeah.
So who is?
So who's over to Public Works?
Yeah, who's doing?
I am.
Oh, okay.
That's two big ones.
Yeah, because it's on this list twice.
Nolan, you could give up Recorder to someone, since you've got the Public Works, Planning, and Development Services.
Okay, I'll give up Recorder, easy.
Who wants to take on Recorder?
I don't know what I, I've been kicked off a couple, so I don't know where I stand now.
Yeah, I haven't even started.
Just CJC.
So.
Okay.
Okay, Catherine's Recorder.
I, I, if I can put in a plug for Planning, I've been doing it for nine years, so I feel like I have a lot of experience in the Planning Department, so if, if that's fine, if we don't want to, but that's something that I feel like I could come and actually have some strings with, but that's fine. I'll, I'll do Recorder, too.
Who's been on, who's on Planning so far now?
Nolan.
Me.
Nolan, and just one person, right?
Yeah.
But on here, it's listed twice.
Well, three times, really.
So do we want another planning person?
We just went over that.
Said no.
Said no, okay.
But who do we have over Public Works?
Me.
You, okay, so you have Public Works.
Public Works and Planning tie together, because you're talking Roads and Planning and that stuff, and, you know, to me, it's.
All right, that's. Okay, very good.
Public Works is pretty, you know.
And Mark took on the IT?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so have we got everyone assigned now?
Well, let's take a look at it next week and make sure.
See how it all falls out.
After all this?
Yep.
All right.
I'm confused.
Very good. All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your willingness to serve on the, in these different areas, and grateful they're here to help on that. And like I said, probably one of the most important things to do is go introduce yourself and let them know you're the liaison with the council. All right, now we can move on to, as Executive Zook mentioned, January 17th, next Tuesday, will be our first legislative session, and it goes to March 3rd. Have you heard if they're having reports weekly, our representatives? Are they going to have a meeting or a Zoom call?
Yes, you mean the, um.
Saturday morning thing?
What's, what used to be the Saturday morning, and then they switched to, to a Thursday night?
Thursday night?
My understanding is that they intend to do that. I, I have not spoken with the legislators about that since last session, but I did speak with the chairman of the Republican Party, and she mentioned to me that she was planning to do that.
Facilitate that.
How it was done last time was the Republican Party hosted those.
Right.
They did ask me to help, and I helped with several of them last time, and I offered that I would be willing to help again this year. So my understanding is that they're planning to do it through Zoom on Thursday nights, like they did before.
We, we tried to get it when we had the breakfast. We tried to talk them into doing the Saturday morning thing again, but they were kind of medicine.
The legislators really like the online version of it.
I can see.
Really gives them an opportunity to not have to rush home Friday night and then be up so early after a tough week.
Saturday is very precious to them. Let's put it that way.
USAC's got a meeting. They got a Zoom in the morning at eight o'clock, I believe.
Each week through the session, they send out a thing on.
Starts tomorrow morning.
On Thursdays.
Really?
Yeah, Thursdays.
There's a email that was sent out by Laura.
Yeah, there's one that starts tomorrow morning.
Yeah, starts at eight o'clock in the morning.
It's on Zoom.
You look at your emails from Laura if you've gotten it, and I can forward that email to everybody if you'd like.
I don't remember seeing that. Would you forward that to me?
Better send it to me, too, please, David. And then, just so that I'm clear, then you're going to tell UAC that I will be serving on the board, and they will contact me, correct?
I'll give the info all to you, you bet.
Okay, on Wednesday, January 18th, it's UAC County Day on the Hill, and there's a little bit of a change. We're going to meet at 7:30, but it will be at Little America, and I, Janine sent out the information and the agenda on that, so be aware of that, and then.
We have to register, too.
You have to register for that.
Do you want me to register you, because I can, if you want me to?
I'm already registered.
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, I, I registered because I paid for my meals already.
Yeah, I did, too.
So you are registered. Anybody else want me to register for it?
I do.
Sure.
Thanks, Janine.
Wednesday mornings don't work for me, so I won't be going.
Okay.
If I could just clarify the, the previous item about the meeting tomorrow morning is a USAC meeting.
Okay.
So just for the new members, new council members, there's USAC and there's UAC, and they're the same but different. UAC is Utah Association of Counties, and then UAC has several subsidiary groups for the different elected officials. For example, there's a Sheriff's Association, and there's a Treasurer's Group, the Recorder's Group, and USAC is the association, is the Utah State Association of County Commissioners and Councils. So you, that's the group for Commissioners and Council members. So you would all be members of that, just like the Sheriff is a member of the Sheriff's Association. So, so just, so you keep that straight. You may be hearing USAC and UAC, and USAC is a subsidiary of UAC.
Also, I, I don't know if the rest of you got the email from UAC. They're holding at three o'clock on the 17th. They're doing training for newly elected officials, and there's a dinner that night, and so, and then they also send out a, a thing that said they've worked out a deal with a Little America. If you want to stay overnight, they've got a really good rate on rooms, so then you'd be there for that 7:30 breakfast, which is what I'm doing, but. So that would mostly involve me, Catherine, and Mark for the newly elected officials' training on the 17th.
Thank you. UAC Building Utah Conference, that's going to be in St. George in April, coming up. And the UAC Management Conference will be in April in Salt Lake City also. And I'm sure we'll get more information on that. Um, now, we'll go to council member reports. Carl, we'll start with you, please.
No, not, nothing specific, just to welcome our new council members, and we're excited to work with you.
Thanks, Carl.
Hope, hope we have a very enjoyable year.
Mark, what would you like to report?
I'll be considerate of your time. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Sandy?
I have nothing to report, just to thank all of the sitting members of the council and for the example that you are, and I look forward to working with all of you. It's been great to watch you function throughout this last year. I'm glad to be a part of the group.
Thank you. Nolan?
Little does she know.
Don't be any.
Still naive.
I guess I said too much already, so I'll be quiet, so.
Okay, Catherine?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. David?
I, I have one question, Mr. Zook. If you'd find out if that we'd have paid that 1% of the LATCF money that we agreed upon sending.
What is LATCF?
Yeah.
If we'd sent it, if it has been sent, they sent invoices out, UAC had sent invoices out. If you just follow up on that, that would be great, to make sure that we agreed on paying that 1%, you know, that, that big, that 400 and something thousand that was sent to us in two lump sums.
Sure, I'll check into that.
And because they, in, in one of the Zoom meetings last week, they made, they brought that up, and there's only seven that actually paid so far. They're getting them in, but I just, they didn't want to say who had and who hadn't. If you just follow up on that, Cameron, or, or I hope, I don't know who they sent the invoice to. So where it actually went to.
Who, do you know who specifically we should reach out to to get the invoice if we have not received?
Well, Brandy's the one that gave us the information. It would take two seconds to send a new invoice out if we had to.
Yeah.
But we agreed on sending that, and I think that's, we need to make a pretty good statement in, in doing that, so. And then I, and I want to personally thank Barbara for this past year. I think she, she has done stalwarts. She is great. She has a love for this county, and she cares about people, and she cares about saving their money and making sure that this county succeeds, and I appreciate her. I'm excited.
I'm excited to work with her here, and, uh, excited to work with all of you.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that.
Catherine just brought up a question on the Finance Reports in our packet, I didn't see that listed.
The expense report?
Yeah.
I didn't get it all.
Okay.
I'll get also.
Cause it's usually there.
Okay, so it's not an actual agenda item, it's just something to review in our packet.
And if you have questions.
Exactly. Good question, Catherine. All right, and. Okay, and I have nothing to report either, um, if we could have a motion to dismiss to executive session?
So moved.
Okay, um.
We have to display.
I'll have to disclose it, we will, uh, dismiss to executive session, Utah Code 52-4-2051A, discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, and we will be convening upstairs, right?
That's what I think we've talked about, just because of.
Excellent.
This room.
All right, could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, and it was seconded, all s.
I'll second it.
Okay, awesome, then moved and seconded, that we adjourn to executive session. All right, let's go ahead and go. Oh, sorry, thank you, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. And we will, we do come back down here, so you don't need to take everything with you.